Good evening, welcome to City Council Meeting Wednesday, March 6, 2019. Can I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff here, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kaczynski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
President.
Okay, we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge with a flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of February 20th? Motion second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. One abstention. Motion still passes. Public speak time. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council for any topic other than what's on the public hearings? This would be the time. If you could come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record. Okay, not seeing anyone. Communications from elected official boards and committees, there's none that I am aware of. We can move on then to Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle.
Counselor, I have one quick thing.
Yeah.
I just wanted to tell the other councilors, I received an email that you may have also received from the Sierra Club. They are going to be hosting a summit for Massachusetts municipal officials, city councilors and selectmen and whatnot, on environmental issues on the 16th, so a week from Saturday, at Framingham State University. I'm thinking of going, so if any other councilors wanted to come with me, I think it's free. If any other councilors wanted to join me, maybe we could carpool or something. I just wanted to let you know that I am interested in attending.
Thanks for the information, we'll be sure to be in touch. Everyone wants to go?
Cool.
Okay, Mayor LaChapelle, thank you.
Good evening. I have actually a request to put before you, and copy is here. I'm asking the council to consider the adoption of MGL Section 32B, Section 19 of the Municipal Health Insurance Reform Act in conjunction with Sections 21 and 22. Section 19 is attached to this memo. I would also ask the council to continue the public hearing on MGL Section 32B, Section 21 and 22, as Section 19 is given due consideration by this body.
Counselor Rist.
I move that Section 19 be sent to Finance for review.
Second. A motion second to move to Finance, consideration of Section 19 of MGL Chapter 32B. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Counselor Rist.
Mayor, if I understand you correctly, we will not vote on 32B, 21 and 22 this evening. We will continue the public hearing until further notice, until which time you would like to bring it back to the table to be adopted or not voted up.
Yes, I think, yes, I think that there is merit to look at Section 19 with 21 and 22, and would appreciate that opportunity to do so at Finance Subcommittee level.
Would this also include negotiation with the IAC?
That would be up to their willingness.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Um, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We can move on then to Boards of Committees. Counselor Rist.
We met last week, and we will be, I'd like to put forward public hearing, no, I'd like to say that next week we will meet on the 13th. We will begin discussions on, at 5:00 on Section 19, in Room 1, as well as the new business, which I'd like to read and bring to committee. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $9,000 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space account. $9,000 to be appropriated to consideration of a dog park. $9,000, the amounts requested were used for the following purpose: the preliminary design work, site selection, schematic design, cost estimates for the creation of a dog park. Secondly, I'd like to make a first reading of requests is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount is $15,950 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing, $15,950 to be appropriated to single-room occupancy housing capital needs assessment, $15,950 for the following purpose: for the funding to conduct a capital needs assessment at each of our five single-room occupancy housing properties, that's affordable housing. I'd like to move that these be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second to both. Okay, we have a motion of second for both those subsequent appropriations. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
I'd also like to set a public hearing for the two aforementioned items for the next council meeting, 6:15 in these chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion of second to set a public hearings for March 20th for the two previously read supplemental appropriations, 6:15 PM in these chambers. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
That concludes.
All right, so, public safety, Counselor Gomez.
Mr. President, yesterday, we met yesterday, March 5th, 6:00 PM. We have a discussion of, we still have a discussion about street parking and crosswalks, and the acceptance of Fox Run as a public way. Basically, we just talked a bit of each topic, because we're going to keep continuing the discussion. We don't have all the paperwork for the submission of the Fox Run to accept it as a public way yet, so we are going to continue in that discussion to our next meeting. Our next meeting is going to be, sorry.
Second.
Per second, at 6:00 PM, and that concludes.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, Counselor Coniff.
So, we met this evening, right before this meeting, to review the mayoral appointment of Jane Sakowitz as personal director for the City of East Hampton, and Jane has previously, most recently, worked as the personal director in Westfield. Prior to that, she was the personal director in East Hampton, and as our conversation this evening, she had left East Hampton as a quote-unquote "career" move, to go to a larger city, and her time there, she said she learned a lot because of the size of the city, and is going to bring back a wealth of experience back to the City of East Hampton. She really enjoys working here and being able to have people come into her office, and she'll, she knows them by name, so there's a certain comfort in that. So, we voted three to zero to approve Jane, and I will now make a motion for the City Council to approve Jane Sakowitz as the personal director with the term expiration 12/31/2021.
Second. Okay, a motion of second to approve Jane Sakowitz as our personnel director. Additional comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
We also have on the agenda tonight, as you'll recall from two weeks ago when we were voting on the CRC, one of the members of that committee, we did not have a full, or at the time, we misinterpreted the charter to presume that we needed a five-vote majority to approve the nomination, when in fact, we needed five votes to reject the nomination. So, at the time, we made a motion to reconsider for this meeting. I would now like to remove, make a motion to remove that reconsideration, and approve Jim Valencourt to the CRC.
Okay, is there, Counselor, I'll second that. Is there, now Counselor Rist, questions or comments?
I think the motion may require a little editing. You don't want a mo, you just want a motion to remove the consideration, you don't want a motion to re-vote on the approval.
Gotcha. Yep.
So, I think you need to reconsider.
Motion, I'll take out the motion I just made, and I will make a new, I will make a new motion to remove the reconsideration.
I'll second that, since I'm the one who asked for it.
Okay, so, there's a motion of second to remove the reconsideration, Jane, Jim Valencourt. Additional questions or comments? Counselor Lynch.
Are we voting to just remove that, and he gets the position?
He's automatic, by virtue of the charter.
Yeah, we had misinterpreted the charter, and thank you for our astute citizens, yeah. We, they found our error in that. It says, worded in the charter that you need a majority against someone, and so, that, it did make that threshold, so he would have been appointed, and so, instead of doubling up again, we just went back to what is the correct interpretation, and so, he will be appointed.
So...
Yep, Counselor.
I understand that there wasn't a vote in the negative by a five-person vote.
Right.
We didn't have a full board, we voted to reconsider at that time, and that was duly noted with the vote and the abstentions. We now have a full board. I think it's important that we take that vote on the appointment as such, at this time, because we did vote to reconsider.
But, I mean, the motion was to remove that vote to reconsider.
I understand, so, but what I'm saying is, I think it's important that we all, we take that vote and take any information.
Well, we have a motion of second to remove it, so you could vote opposed to that.
And I'd like to speak to my reasons.
Yeah, sure.
To that. It was brought to our attention that there were several postings by this individual, and at the time, I was unaware of those postings, and I abstained from the vote because of that. I looked at the postings, and frankly, if we're talking about having a community relations committee, I think those postings were totally inappropriate for someone who's going to be on the committee. So, I joined Counselor Gomez at this time, who voted not in favor of the appointment, and I'd like to speak to the subject, if I may, for a moment. The purpose of this community panel is to bring the city together, building support and acceptance. The premise is that we put people on the panel who themselves are supportive and accepting. Mr. Valencourt's very public posts on social media are extremely aggressive, disrespectful, insulting, and alienate large portions of our community. Quite frankly, they're hateful. He has aggressively attacked the Catholic Church, and consequently Catholics, the Pope, people from the South, and anyone who voted for President Trump. He paints everyone in these groups with the same brush. His posts are graphically demeaning to members of the city, and these posts are the antithesis of our intent to build acceptance. We can't be hypocritical. If these posts were made to demean Jews, Muslims, or Democrats and progressives, there would be no question that he would not be acceptable for the purpose of this panel. Hate and disrespect is the same, no matter who you are directing that hatred towards. Mr. Valencourt has put his disdain for many in the community out in the public for all to see, although he has a right to his opinions. He is clearly not appropriate if we are truly trying to build a community of respect and acceptance of all its members. We're responsible for what we post on social media, and freedom of speech doesn't take away the consequences of hateful speech. We can't disapprove hate and prejudice on one hand, and then accept others simply because their hate is pointed in a different direction. I urge you to vote no on this appointment.
So, we still, we have a motion of second on the table to remove it, so this would be the opportunity for councilors who feel that, yes, indeed, this vote should have reconsideration. I, as last time, I had to abstain because he has worked for us on the dairy farm and paid him, so that kind of makes me have to abstain, but, so, we'll do it, so, we'll need a roll call on this, we'll do a roll call then on that. So, this is, again...
Point of clarification, Counselor.
So, it's important to note that a no vote on this is a vote to not remove the vote of reconsideration, correct?
Counselor Rist.
A vote on this, essentially, if you vote not to reconsider, which is the motion on the floor, you're essentially re-appointing him because we're not going to reconsider it, because last time, it was voted without five negative votes.
Correct.
If we reconsider it, then the vote can be taken again, either way.
But the current vote on the floor is to remove the vote of reconsideration, so I wanted to make it clear what a yes or a no vote means. Correct? A yes vote?
Yes means remove the motion for reconsideration.
Correct. Right, so no in this case means that we do want to reconsider.
Right, okay. Does anyone understand that?
No means reconsider.
Right, so, Counsel, I mean, we have a roll call, please.
Salem Derby.
No.
Omar Gomez.
No.
JP Kaczynski.
No.
William Lynch.
No.
Joe McCoy.
Abstain.
Tom Peak.
No.
Dan Rist.
No.
Owen Zera.
No.
Oh, you're, you're, you're voting no? Okay. Okay.
You didn't, you didn't call my name.
Oh, sorry, you're at the top, I'm sorry.
I'm a yes, I'm a yes.
Okay.
So, now we have to reconsider.
So, we do have, so, we will have the reconsideration vote, so, again, I guess what I do is just by roll call, just to be consistent.
Just to be clear, we're voting on the nomination of Mr. Valencourt to the human, what is the name of the?
Community Relations Committee.
Community Relations Committee.
And a no vote, a yes vote, you need five no votes.
You need five notes to reject, or five votes approves, without, five votes to reject.
Okay.
Do we need a new motion?
Is there?
I'll make the motion to consider.
Before the motion, I, this is a mayoral appointment, I'd like to let the mayor speak to this.
I would, I have, just to the clarification of what, what the council's actions were last meeting and this meeting, so is it to say that if the charter clearly lays out that Mr. Valencourt was indeed appointed by the formation of that original vote per charter, that a motion made by a misinterpretation of that charter, that part of the charter then rules and brings us to the votes today?
Counselor Rist.
We have a rule that allows reconsideration. The charter does not, charter allows the council to make its own rules, reconsideration of any measure put before the council, whether it's a measure on appropriation or whatever. That's what was adopted. Regardless of, at the time when I made that, it was because I wanted a full council to discuss it.
Right.
I did not know the charter, but it, the charter doesn't trump, in my view, a reconsideration vote, because if it did, then we would not have reconsideration of anything. I believe that the council is allowed to reconsider any vote for any measure, as long as it's properly presented and the council votes to reconsider, which we did the last time, and which we affirmed this time. That's my opinion. You want to get the attorney on it?
I, I'm not looking for that. I, I think it's important to put on the record, given just the tenor of the, the comments, so...
Okay.
I just wanted to understand the point of clarification on, on rules. Thank you.
So...
Counselor Rist.
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Mr. Valencourt to the Community Relations Committee be adopted in the affirmative.
Is, is there a second?
For that, just to get a vote.
Second.
Okay, so, there's a motion of second, so, at this case then, a no would be for not the appointment, a yes would be for the appointment. City Clerk, if you could do the roll call, please.
Omar Gomez.
No.
JP Kaczynski.
No.
Bill Lynch.
No.
Joe McCoy.
Abstain.
Tom Peak.
No.
Dan Rist.
No.
Owen Zera. Oh, abstain, right?
I'll get abstained.
Okay. Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
No.
Six no's, one yes, two abstentions.
Okay, so, that, that does not pale, so we'll need another pointee from the mayor's office then. Okay.
Okay, so, I have some new business. We have, I'd like to move the nomination of Stan McCoy to the Licensing Board with a term expiration of June 5th, 2024, to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Second.
So, there's a motion of second to move Stan McCoy to appointments for the Licensing Board consideration, obviously after abstain. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Me. Motion still passes.
We have two other City Council appointments, one, someone by the name of Barbara LeBombarde, two city clerk with a term expiration of 3/31/2022, and Marion Giza, Assistant City Clerk, 3/31/2022. I will make a motion for those to be moved to the Subcommittee.
Second. Okay, motion of second to move the appointments of the Barbara LeBombarde and Marion Giza to appointments. Additional questions or comments?
Treat your name.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And two mayoral appointments, Amy Petrowski to the Board of Health with 12/31/2021 expiration date, and Eric Poulain to Parks and Rec with a 12/31/2021 date. I will make a motion to move those to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion, and a second to move the previously read names to, again, also to appointments for consideration for appointment. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor.
Aye.
Abstain, motion, I mean, abstentions, no, motion passes. I see we're over for our public hearings.
Real quick, real quick, I have our next meeting set for 3:20 at 5:30, thus concludes.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Coniff. So, we're over for...
I move that we open the public hearings, Mr. President.
Second. Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. I'll have you start, Counselor Rist.
So, I'm going to jump to the proposal to accept MGL Chapter 32B, 21 and 22. We are going to remove this from public hearing consideration this evening, and continue it till a date to be announced. From a personal point of view, the Finance Committee had hoped that the IAC, that's the Insurance Advisory Committee, for anybody who doesn't know what that is, that's the committee that represents all of the employees and advises the administration on insurance matters, including healthcare. In the hopes, we had hoped that that particular committee and the mayor could reach agreement. The mayor has put forward Section 19 and wants this removed. It is my hope that those negotiations can continue. Therefore, in removing this, we have a public hearing scheduled, and you're allowed to speak, but I'd like cooler heads to prevail. There's a lot of tension, a lot of anger on both sides on this. Why don't we let people continue to talk? If you want to speak tonight, you can, but I ask you to consider the fact that adding a lot of flame to the waters, I don't think is going to help. But, Mr. President, I, I do not want to report, the Finance Committee's report on this at this time, since we're continuing the public hearing, and I guess you should open the floor to anybody who wants to speak to it tonight, but know that this would mean a long meeting without a vote. There is not going to be a vote tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, to summarize again, there will be no vote on the 21/22, as, as 19 is now being looked at, and they may supersede the adoption of 21/22. Because we did schedule a public hearing, we will, you know, take some comments, with so many of you here would like to leave it to two minutes, I have my phone. We'd also like speakers to be either residents of East Hampton or employees of East Hampton, speaking to this issue, as it directly involves this community. There is, if you do speak, there is a sheet on the podium, if you could just please name, sign your name and address for the City Clerk for our public record. Also, as sometimes, you know, the council says these kind of big meetings can get heated, please direct any comments to the council, not to anyone else in the audience, and, you know, please be respectful and state your point as you would like. So, if you, again, this is not, the only time, there'll be more of this, because as, as this progresses and we look at 19, but you're welcome to come to the podium for a couple of minutes and state your opinion, since we're all here. So, if anyone wants to come forward, please do.
Thank you. Okay.
Real quickly, so, we are, so, my name is Alan Shadle, police officer, City of East Hampton, police representative on the IAC. We have majority of our IAC here as well. Obviously, what happened tonight threw us all off, so, first of all, I want to personally thank everybody who is here. You guys are outstanding, you guys are great. I've had the opportunity to work with not only police officers, firemen, but the teachers as well, and DPW, basically everybody in here. I've worked with you in one way or another, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everybody that's here today. Thank you very much. With, with that said, in talking with our IAC members, we definitely want to continue an open dialogue with the mayor. We hope that we can definitely come up with something. Our history has shown in 35 years, we have never been able not to come up with something that's been fair and equitable to everybody that's at the table. So, we hope that we all put in the best effort we can to come up with some sort of agreement, so we don't have to pull 100 and some people here again on a night that's extremely cold.
Violating the occupancy permit, I think.
I wasn't going to say that. So, anyways, so, again, everybody, I apologize, but thank you. Thank you.
So, I guess that's it, General.
So, has anyone else want to speak before? Again, this is a continuation, there'll be plenty of time to speak in the future, but if you're here on this cold night and you want, take a couple of minutes to make your voice heard, I'd like to make sure, Counselor Rist.
Just want to say that this, if there is a new public hearing to be scheduled, it will be announced at the meeting prior to that public hearing, and it will be on the website, and I'm sure the IAC will be informed, and you'll get it out there. If it happens, you'll have plenty of time, there has to be at least a two-week notice, and I believe Barbara feels it should be republished.
Hello again. My name's Benjamin Taylor. I live here in East Hampton, 418 Main Street, apartment number three. I've lived here for about 10 years now. I'm here again, speaking in front of you, and I have to say that I'm actually pretty angry. I feel like we're being jerked around, that we've come here again, you know, literally weeks later, and now we're being told that we have to wait yet again to a date not even determined, to find out whether or not these, this, this law, which I think that the people in this room here are very convinced would be bad for them, bad for their families, and bad for this community. I think that, you know, looking at the law itself, I think that it needs to be said that the Public Employees Council looks like a sham body, because it is followed by, if they do not come to an agreement, by a more powerful body, which does not have democratic control over it from the city's workers, the Municipal Health Insurance Review Panel, which can then put through whatever it wants to, regardless of what kind of agreement or where the, where the workers have come to an agreement with the city. I find that to be anti-democratic and reprehensible, and I urge you, again, to vote no on MGL 32B Sections 21 and 22, and also 19, which I think when folks get a chance to look at this a little further, we'll see that that's, this is an escalation to put Section 19 on the, on the docket here. It's an escalation to really strip collective bargaining rights around health insurance in East Hampton, and it's a damn shame. Thank you.
If you have cooler heads, it didn't work.
Okay, anyone else?
Moving on.
Okay, so, we have additional public hearings concerning financial issues, so Counselor Rist.
Does everybody want to leave?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to start this, if everybody's going to leave. Motion to have a...
Recession.
Recession for five minutes, Mr. President.
Second.
Oh, I will do that when they're gone. I mean, I'm sorry.
Second.
Did I have a mo, can we have a recess?
To close the public hearing?
No, to recess.
Never mind, so, we're just waiting for the room to clear. Weird to me.
Thank you.
You want to yell at him? Get out? Let's go, people, you can't bitch here. They got to do their meeting.
Move that he be the departmentarian.
Like that, right? Kill him with guns. It works.
So should I start now?
He's right there.
What's going to be saying, unstable?
He doesn't want to go.
Just go, just go to, if you just go to MassGov and just put in MGL thirty-two.
No, I know that, but I want someone to explain it to me.
Well, we're going to have a meeting on it, apparently. Mister.
Can you retrieve Counselor Wrist?
Retrieve.
She's like social.
Oh, I didn't really, you didn't even announce it. You said so.
Yeah.
You're the boss. Hey JP.
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 I'd like to get on with it.
Okay. Public hearing is still in session, so Counselor Wrist.
Mr. President, I move that the public hearing for adoption of thirty-two B twenty-one and twenty-two be continued until further notice.
Motion second to continue public hearing on twenty-one, twenty-two until further notice. Initial questions or comments? All those in favor. Aye.
Opposed.
One abstention?
Abstained.
Oh, three abstentions?
Oh, yeah, abstained.
Three abstentions.
I forgot. I can't even second it.
Did you second it?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
It's on the air, you're in trouble. That's why I go over there. So now we have, Mr. President, we have eight hundred dollars a transfer requested by the clerk in order to pay for advertising.
I'm going to call it a point of personal privilege. Mr. President, it's kind of hard to hear. People can quiet down.
I got it. Don't forget to. Be the crossing barrier on it.
Doesn't the chief need a uniform? Can I continue?
Sorry, I just.
No, you were correct. Counselors here, thank you.
The amount requested is eight hundred dollars. This was needed because we've had a lot of necessary publication of appropriations and borrowing. The bonding for the school, when it was publicized, cost us, what, five hundred dollars alone?
No, I think it was like two hundred and twenty-five.
Well, anyway, that adds up. So the eight hundred dollars is necessary to get us through the year for more advertising whenever we have an appropriation or anything. The Finance Committee voted two to zero in favor of this.
Or did you make a motion?
I'm not. We have to open a public hearing for people.
Oh, I forgot. It's a public hearing. Yeah, so if there's anyone here who would like to address this appropriations to departmental transfer, either from the city or the public, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, not seeing any, Counselor Wrist.
I make a motion that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is eight hundred dollars to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, eight hundred dollars, to be transferred to the City Council. Budget, eight hundred dollars. The request for the following purpose, to supplement the City Council budget for legal advertisements.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
The next interdepartmental transfer is a fifty thousand dollar request to pay for, that wasn't me, legal fees. It should be noted, we did get, at the request of the Finance Committee, the Personnel Office and the Finance Director put together a large stack, this is a stack of legal invoices, that we received just to check on why the budget was not enough. It's interesting to note, and on a personal note, I noticed that when I called Jack Fitzgibbon to ask a minor question about the charter, it cost seventy-five dollars. I'm in the wrong profession. Anyway, by, by that, it is one of the reasons that they need, that the city needs more money for legal services is because we do have a great many projects going on in the Planning Department, for instance, One Ferry Street being something we all support. We have issues surrounding the school and the roundabout. We have labor needs, labor discussions, like around twenty-one and twenty-two. All of these added up, and unfortunately, unless we appropriate, it is illegal for the mayor and the finance director to spend money that's not in a budget. In other words, you can't deficit spend an account. So all legal services have, has basically stopped until we approve this. And I think we need, unfortunately, we do need legal services. So the Finance Committee voted three to zero to approve this.
May I add to that, if I may? Frankly, when I looked at the request, we had originally a budget of like forty-seven thousand dollars and, forty-seven thousand dollars and change, and now all of a sudden we have a request for fifty thousand dollars additional as a supplemental request. That's like a hundred and six percent increase. I had my questions about that. So I did ask the mayor to come up with the paperwork, and I wanted to thank the mayor for her efforts in that regard. Thank you so much. You did a great job in that. My skepticism, I think, was wholly appropriate in our fiduciary responsibilities, but I concur that the expenses were there, they are legitimate, they're for good reasons, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Counselor Lynch.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski.
Counselor Lynch.
I did some math, because I like it, and with the budget and what we still owe, the total equates to about seventy-three thousand dollars. Over eight months, that's about a nine, ninety-two hundred dollar spend per month that we've been averaging. If we do that for the continuous four months of the fiscal year, it's going to bring us to about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So the fifty thousand that she's requesting is, in my eyes, a little conservative, and I had skepticism too, and I had requested the bills that we still owe. Bills paid are bills paid, but what we owe is, we got to be true to the lawyers and everybody that's working for us. So, you know, I want to just throw that out there, that I think that the figure that she's throwing out, even though it is double, is still reasonable and conservative, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you. So this is, again, this is a public hearing, right?
We have a public one.
Yeah. So if anyone from, either from the city, the mayor, it might be an opportunity if you want to say more about this, and also certainly the public, once the mayor speaks concerning this appropriation.
Thank you. And as I said in the initial request, I appreciate, you know, the accountability and the ask for additional information at all, at all times. The legal bills and the amount I asked for early on or in the year, there were lots of one-time expenses, legal, that we don't expect to reoccur. They were very unique, looking at, you know, the driveways at, at the middle school, you know, and, and just getting some clarifications on easements and around the solar projects. So while I very much hope to return some of that fifty thousand dollars to free cash, I don't think, I feel good in the, the amount of fifty thousand.
Okay. Any more, okay. Anyone from the public could like to address the council concerning this appropriation of fifty thousand dollars? Mr. Polin, if you can go up, just say your name and address for the record.
My name's Eric from Fort Hillbury. I was just wondering if I could get the contact info for this attorney.
Probably through the mayor's office would be the best way.
She didn't respond. Could I get it from you?
Yeah, I think it's public record. I don't have it on me, but I will get it up to you.
Can I give you my email address?
I know where you live. I know where you work.
So understand.
Yeah. Thank you. No, I get it to you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the city, community, like to address the council on this appropriation? Okay, entertaining motion, Counselor Wrist.
I just wanted to make it clear, the mayor alluded to this. The Reserve Fund is a fund designed to help us cover these appropriate, these budgets that do go over, and if we didn't use the money in the Reserve Fund, it would be, become free cash. And if the attorney, legal services account is not completely spent, that becomes free cash. So no matter what we do, the money can only be spent for what we ask to be spent for, and it's up to us to move the money. So we have, we shouldn't have a fear that if the money's not spent, it's going to be used for something else. It can't be. It has to go to free cash or come back to us for another interdepartmental transfer. Saying that, I ask the full council to approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is fifty thousand dollars to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, fifty thousand dollars, to be transferred to legal services, fifty thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to supplement the city attorney professional services budget shortfalls in fiscal year nineteen.
Second. A motion second to approve the interdepartmental transfer, fifty thousand dollars from the Reserve Fund for attorney professional services. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Motion second to close public hearings. All those in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, public hearing is closed. Can move on to standing committees' ordinance. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that my committee was teaching me a lesson for missing a meeting. My docket, it seemed to double. I sent everything there. That being said, we do have a meeting tomorrow night at six PM downstairs, and we are going to look at some of the business that we have had in the committee. That meeting is specifically omitting the welcoming community ordinance, which we are going to have a meeting on March eleventh, which is Monday, at six PM here. So we're going to separate that off of the agenda. A little bit of housekeeping here. I am going to make a motion to have the request to consider seeking over-quoted liquor licenses moved to rules. So I'm going to make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to move the request for the over quicker licenses to rules, regulations. Additional questions or comments? Counselor Wrist.
Having been chair of rules for a long time, we've never done that. Why are we doing this?
Just so that it may be addressed in an appropriate timeframe.
Oh, he has too much to do.
Yes. That's another way to say it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, for what it's worth, we are rules and government relations, and this is a communication to the House, to the legislature, so.
The charter says it has to be sent to a committee. Doesn't matter what committee it is. So we're okay.
And as I was filling in for President McCoy, I helped clear rules and government relations agenda.
You did, okay.
Yes. So I think that it's, it's a fair trade. That being said, I don't have any other.
We still have, I don't think we voted on it. Do we have a motion second? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I thought it was okay. Okay. So that being said, that concludes my report.
Okay. Property Counselor Kuzinski.
We're happy to report that we have scheduled a meeting to discuss the easement approval sought in connection with the solar array project off of Park Street, and that will be the only topic we will discuss on Wednesday, the thirteenth, at six fifteen. And I say that because there, just before, the Finance Committee will be meeting at five, and will be discussing the Dog Park issue as far as funds are concerned. So it would seem that we should be focusing at that, if, at that time on the Finance Committee's CPA request, and that the Property Committee meet to discuss the solar array, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Good. I'm nodding from the Property Committee, so, well, this concludes.
Okay. Government Relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had a meeting last week that was really productive, and I have a quite a bit of stuff to report out. So first of all, we finally had a really thorough discussion of forty-one C and a half senior tax abatements. I apologize that it took so long for us to get there, but there really was a lot of research that needed, needed to go into it. As disappointed as I was to say this, once we looked over everything involved, it just, we couldn't come to the conclusion that this would be a good fit for the city. I really do believe that our current limits, like income limits, are way too low, that there's people who are really hurting, that are making quite, like, you know, fifty percent or more over that limit. But the income limits under forty-one C and a half are set to a state tax abatement program, and the data that I pulled from census and whatnot suggests that the vast majority of people, you know, over the eligibility age are probably eligible. The challenge here is that for every person that applies, the amount that gets kicked on to, you know, the rest of the seniors, or the rest, or the rest of the taxpayers increases at a nonlinear rate. So you can run into a challenge where if you have maybe even like a sixth of tax, of taxpaying, of households applying for this, that's getting pushed on to everyone else, including some other vulnerable populations, low-income non-seniors, low-income seniors who are renters and whose landlords are going to increase their rent as their property taxes go up and whatnot. So it sucks, everyone knows I was really into this idea, I really pushed for this. After a thorough review, I couldn't recommend it. I don't think this is, I'm not done on this. I would really like to look into other, I'm going to continue exploring other, other methods. I hope that my colleagues will join me in doing that because I do think that our situation right now is unacceptable, but this doesn't seem to me to be the solution. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion to remove MGL Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, clause forty-one C and a half consideration without prejudice.
Question?
If I may, before we.
Sure.
Is that remove without prejudice? So it could be brought, I didn't hear that.
I did want to remove it without prejudice because.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't hear you say that.
Yes, I did say remove without prejudice.
Okay, good, because that's what I wanted you to say.
So a motion second to remove that without prejudice. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Okay, so the second thing that we cleared was Rule seventeen D. Seventeen D is a rule that Counselor Wrist came up with, and I think that while it was delayed a little bit through just procedural matters, it was a timely delay because as we've been going over these legal funds, we've been able to sort of understand what the cost of the city is every time that one of us picks up the phone and calls the city solicitor. We wanted to make sure, and Counselor Wrist could probably speak better to this, but we voted three, three to zero with Counselor Derby subbing in for Counselor McCoy, to approve this because we thought that it is, it is the prudent thing to do, and Counselor Wrist made an amendment to it that I think is, is wise. So Counselor Wrist, would you like to explain this?
Oh, I think this request came from Counselor Gomez originally, and the council by majority vote may override a president's decision. This would allow, in this case, if there was ever a case in which the president was in league with the mayor and wanted to not approve a city attorney opinion that counselors wanted, the council could override it. And the other reason for that is because it gives the council the authority to, we also have a rule that, I mean, we, we can't amend our rules by just majority of vote. We can also suspend them. But just suspending them would have done the job, but this is right in the rule, so if it ever became a need to override a president's decision not to allow an attorney opinion, then this was added, and I thank Counselor Gomez, I think that was a good idea. We have been, we have to be, to be honest with you, I was surprised at how much it costs for a simple phone call for five minutes. And they bill at, what is it, Sam, point six?
Every six minutes they bill.
They bill every six minutes, and I'm going to myself, that is why we need to have a filter. Now, we have chairs of committees who are going to have, ordinance is going to have to check every ordinance through twenty-one and twenty-two, if we ever do that, has to be, you know, all of these things have to be sent to attorneys. And I think the vast majority of requests that we need city attorney opinion on will be approved by the president because they're just logical. But we need to have a filter so that counselors in the future don't just call the city attorney, don't just call them. Don't just call them, because the city attorney has to pick up the phone and answer your question. And it costs the city taxpayers money. So, and we have a, we have a different city attorney now who is, the whole partnership that they have at Bacon Wilson, it's a little more expensive as well. So I think it's a good rule.
Thank you.
I saw Counselors Zaret first, I'll come right back.
I wanted to recommend an amendment. Do I have to wait till you've made the motion to recommend?
Yeah, that's usually we do, make an amendment, make amendment on the motion. Do you want to discuss the motion?
Wanted to.
Think I discussed the amendment.
Well, I'm just looking at this, and I actually, you know, first I was a little hesitant about it, but I do think it makes sense, especially again, and for the merits that everyone listed. But, but one thing I would like to consider adding is a timeframe, and I was just sitting here thinking in my mind, maybe 30 days that the, that the council president has to respond to such a request. Because theoretically, the request could be made and the, and the president, and I'm not saying you would do this, President McCoy, but theoretically, they could just choose not to respond, and then no response has been made. So I think there has, there should be some sort of framework provided that, in which the response has to be accepted, that the president has to make a response, so as not to hold up the process.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I actually, you know, I would almost say it should be like three days or something.
Yeah, much less than thirty.
I don't think 30, I think maybe 15.
Would it make more sense, since, since the, the method for overriding this if we need to is, like, you, it has, we have to be together to do that? Would it make, this is to say that they need to respond by the next city council meeting?
Yeah.
Because that's the next, that's the first time that we could take any action.
Again, and I think the situation, my experience has always been with, you know, I get a call from a counselor, I say, oh yeah, sure, right away, you know, so nine times out of 10, it's immediate. But in the instance, there probably should be some kind of timeframe. Counselor Krasinski, I'm sorry.
I have to say, I thought this was somewhat of a non-issue. And I say that because of the history of the council. I can't remember where the counselors have ever abused their right to contact the city attorney. And I consider it a right, as an elected official, should I have a legal question, and any of us have a legal question, to be able to get legal counsel in a reasonable fashion. So I don't ever recall us, there ever being abuse, so I was a little surprised to see this. I also, I think this is important because of, we're just having gone through the legal budget with a fine-tooth comb. It was the mayor's issues that spent all the mon, almost all the money. I think like 98% of the money was spent on issues that were brought forth by the executive branch and not by the city council branch of government. We're balancing portion of government, and I think we should feel the right, should we ever need to, to go ahead and express that through getting a legal opinion. That being said, we all should know that there is a portion of the legal budget that allows for any call to a legal official without charge.
Oh, there is.
If you look at the, look at the numbers, we're being billed $525 a month by one of the legal firms.
That's the consulting firm, it's not our city attorney.
We were told, when I talked to the mayor, maybe I missed, there was a miscommunication, and I might be wrong, but that anyone could call and get, have a chance to consult with the attorney. Now, in terms of having them research and do a legal opinion, that's a different matter. And that costs more money than a telephone call for some advice on a subject. But we certainly should feel free to do so, and I don't think any of the counselors have ever abused that.
Mr. President, I'd just like to respond. Bacon Wilson and our city attorney is not on retainer. That was a thought, I remember, Mr. President and I were talking about that with the mayor. That was a thought early on, that a retainer would be there for that purpose. If there was a retainer, you're right, it'd be easy to make a phone call. But our city attorney is not. There is a consulting firm, I think it was, for.
Human Resources.
Human Resources, that does have a retainer discussion. I believe Counselor Lynch and Counselor Derby would agree that that's what they were talking about, but not our city attorney. So every time we call, we incur. I saw my name there a few times.
Well, I, I knew that was from Jack Fitzgibbon.
Well, it was because of the charter, and then I was told that he wouldn't be reappointed, so we stopped calling, because I, then I just gave the city attorney a great deal to do, because he's reappointed. And I went through the president. It is common, though, that the mayor also, if any of her departments needs to contact the city attorney, she's the head of, over those departments. The president is our department head. And I'm not necessarily saying that this is a problem now, but I think the rule, we want to make sure that the city attorney isn't inundated with phone calls, it isn't for reasons other than something that's on our agenda and is definitely something that has to be dealt with. And it's just, it, it's not going to delay anything. A call to Joe or a call to any president, it should happen quickly, as Counselor McCoy said.
And I think also, the two situations necessarily mean it makes, there is, it could be the scenario where the question you're asking isn't really the purview of the city council, so maybe this isn't a, a good use of our time, that's, that should be requested by someone else. But also, there is also the idea that maybe the question you have, the mayor had already asked that and has a legal opinion on it. And so sometimes, I think it's also a safeguard to protect duplication of work being done, I think.
I would agree with those two reasons for, to insert the word consult with the city, the council president. Because a consult with the council president is highly appropriate, and I think that's what you just said, that you wanted someone to consult with the president so that if there was an opinion, you could speak to them.
Yeah, but I think the department head, quote unquote, president could, should still be able to say, actually, we already have a duplication, so I don't think that would be a good use of our funds. Or, actually, I think that's outside the legislature purview, so I don't think that's a good use. So I think the department head should be able to say, I don't think it's a good, again, the step, the stopgap is there, that if the rest of the council disagrees, you can override it. But I, I think as a department head, they should have the right. Counselor Con?
I agree with you.
Hold on, stop the presses. Write it down.
But I, mostly, I, I just wanted to say that if you want to talk about reasonability, I think this is entirely reasonable. I don't think it's a burden. I don't think we're asking for a significant decision by the, the president. I think it's appropriate. I think it's, it, it, the fact that it has never happened before is not what our guiding post should be. Our guiding post should be good rules and good process. And so this, to me, makes a lot of sense and keeps us very aware of what is being spent by the lawyers, which we know are extremely expensive. I, too, also have an amendment I'd like to make, so I don't know if I can bring it up.
Well, maybe for, simple as saying, why don't we talk about, so that we can just make one amendment?
Sure.
Or, or two very.
Do you want me to just? Okay. So all, there's a typo, number one. So where you have, generated by the council committee or, and individual, I think you meant and individual.
Yes.
And then the verbiage that's bolded and italicized is a little clunky to me.
Took me a while to figure out how to make it clunky.
It says, "The council by majority vote may override a president's decision not to allow for an opinion should a counselor request it." My feeling is it should say, "Should a counselor request it, the council by majority vote may override the decision of the president to deny the request for an opinion."
I like it.
It's just, there was a lot of double negatives in there. I did write it down.
Is it written?
I need it. Yeah, I got it written.
My one thing is, okay, if you, if we're going to move, do that, could we also restructure that? Because I had just worked in Counselor Zaret's suggestion into that sentence to say, "The council by majority vote override a president's decision to allow an opinion should the council request it." Actually, my thing sucks, nevermind.
Not allowed.
You should just write, "Counselor must first be approved by the council president within 15 days."
That could be the last, the second sentence.
Or, okay, you could actually put it as a second sentence, "The council president must respond to a request."
That was likely to be my suggestion.
Yeah. All right, cool, let's do that one.
Okay.
And then we'll do your thing.
Okay, so it's the second sentence would be the timeframe.
Would be, yeah.
And then we move into the.
Okay, I want that all in writing.
Yeah.
Counselor Wrist?
May I, may I suggest that these amendments be placed, given to Counselor Peak, and we re-submit this at the next meeting?
Yeah, that works for me.
Because that way, we'll know that we're actually writing things down the way we're speaking them.
Yep.
Yeah, that's entirely reasonable.
So I would, I would just request that this be continued, Counselor Peak, and we just talk about it at the next meeting, and maybe Counselor Zaret and Counselor Coniff can give you those opinions.
Great. I'll make a motion to continue this until the next meeting, and we can discuss it further then.
Well, you don't have to.
Oh, yeah, we just.
We didn't make a motion.
Yeah, we didn't make any motions, so, yeah, we're good. All right, sweet. Cool. Well, I withdraw the motion to make a motion. Okay.
Good job. Punchy.
One.
Back of sleep, I'll do that.
One, we have one more thing. We also talked about the request to establish a municipal light plant, and we were all in favor of that. Just to be clear, the way that Massachusetts law works, if you, okay, just to back up even more, the reason we might do this is because there's a committee in the city that's looking into the possibility of setting up a public internet utility, sort of like what Westfield and Greenfield and a few other communities have. There's, this seems like a potentially promising idea. If we wanted to do that, we would need to establish what's called a municipal light plant. It's just a legal designation that allows us to put stuff up on poles. We don't currently have it. It doesn't cost anything to get that designation, but it does, like, it is just something we need to do. And in order to do that, we need to take two separate votes in two separate fiscal years, then the voters need to ratify it. So this first vote doesn't even ask us to ask the voters to ratify it, it just sets us up to ask the voters to ratify it if we want sometime in the summer. So it's, it's highly non-binding, but if we don't do it, then it would be a problem. I spoke to, to President McCoy and to Barb about this, and the thing that we ran into is we couldn't quite figure out whether or not this requires a public hearing, but it seems like since it's adopting a state, or since it's, you know, a vote that, on a matter of state law, that's kind of likely that it does. Maybe it doesn't, but we don't want to get jammed up on the off-chance that this ends up being a problem. So while it might be a little extraneous, I would like to set a public hearing for our next meeting on March 20th at 6:00 PM.
Second. Motion second to set a public hearing relating to the municipal light plant creation on March 20th. Additional questions or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
And then the only thing on our agenda is that we've got to find a time to meet up and talk about the liquor licenses, so I'll talk to you two about that.
Can I ask, Mr. President, does he know how urgent that is?
My understanding, sorry.
Well, go ahead.
My understanding is that there are businesses who would like them.
So we should act quickly.
I believe we're down to one.
So.
Over-quoted liquor license, the licensing board has to work with at the moment. And it does take a while to get, because that's go to the state and back, so.
I mean, so here's my next question, and I just, could, like, if everyone's unanimous about it, we can just take a vote tonight, right? Like, does anyone?
No.
No?
There's specific special act.
For this one, for special act? Okay. All right, well, then let's just figure out a time in between now and the 20th that we can meet. I don't expect it to be a long meeting. And that concludes.
Before we move on to review, I, I just have this one question for you, Counselor Peak, how, especially considering two board members are here, how would this affect East Hampton Media?
I'm really glad you asked, because we just had a, a long discussion about that on Monday in telecom. East Hampton Media is currently funded by, well, in part by, by cable television subscriptions. Every cable television subscription, they get 5%, or, the, the city gets 5%, and then the city sends a chunk of that to East Hampton Media to compensate them for.
Ninety-five percent.
Yeah, it's, it's 95% of that to East Hampton Media in compensation for all the valuable services they provide. That, i- if, if we were to do something like this, this would just be for internet, so it wouldn't necessarily be an issue. That being said, when many people adopt these sorts of things, it often leads to people doing sort of cord-cutting, as they get much, much faster internet and can stream better and things like that. So the telecom advisory committee is actively looking into what could be done to mitigate that, including some sort of, you know, i- if we were to form an MLP, the legality of forming an agreement that makes sure that a share of the revenue is sent to East Hampton Media. That may end up being a really good thing, because the way, the FCC is currently trying to gut the regulations that allow us to take, to take that fee and send it to our public access, which could be like apocalyptic for not just us, but public access channels around the country. It's a horrifying thing that they're proposing, and the sort of civic damage that could be involved, it's hard to even measure. So this, so having sort of a, a, an idea of a, of a secondary source of revenue for them could actually be promising. We don't know yet whether we can. We have a member who's actively looking into that.
Thank you for the update. Counselor Wrist, turn to review.
I want to thank Counselor Peak, first of all. Chapter 59, 41(c)(1/2). I failed to mention that Counselor Peak did tremendous research on that with a great deal of research into the economics surrounding it, and I appreciate that. He also did a great deal of research and helped the charter review committee by getting the Rank Choice Resource Center to Skype in and talk to us about rank choice voting. I thank Counselor Peak, because information is how we make decisions, and we got a lot of information. Our next meeting will be held next week at 6:00 in Room 1. We will debate, finally, what we want to do with ranked choice voting, continue our discussions on Article 7. If, and I doubt it, if we get that done, we're going to move on to terms of offices, because as chair, I want to make sure that we take care of anything that would definitely have to go to the voters before our deadline, which I believe is June.
What date next week? You said next week?
14th.
Okay.
My apologies. Thursday the 14th at 6:00 PM. That's a regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I believe we've gone through all the new business, unless anyone has any comments. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. See you on March 20th.